All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the time and place for the Grand Forks City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. I'll begin with a welcome and roll call, please.
Wydell?
Here.
Lasky here.
Here.
Lasky here.
Here.
Sammy?
Here.
Bean?
Here.
We have four.
Very good. Thank you. Item two point one legislative update. Mr. Bernstein.
Thank you, council member. First things first, we're getting new toys in this building every day, so we now have a the speakers are plugged in and the sound system is working, so we're we're working on the sound in there and we're trying and trying. So so looking for any feedback as this goes on, there's something new here, and we only have one wing, so I apologize that we don't have one up there. So with the legislative update, I want to focus on the two bills. We talked last week about Senate Bill twenty three thirty. Now that is the Legacy Fund Investment Bill, but in that bill, there was money that was going to impact the infrastructure revolving loan fund that they were actually taking out. There has been a lot of discussion in Bismarck about the bill, the understanding, the impacts of of taking that money away. It's three hundred million dollars from the Legacy Fund to go into the infrastructure revolving loan fund as a backstop. I can, there's no no movement on the bill last week if we will shorten discussion. And I do understand that this week there is a meeting with legislative leadership that we are at the table with, the council member Bean, I believe you you hope to be there this week. Is that correct?
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. So it's it's not a committee meeting, it is an informal meeting, but I think there's a lot of discussion of, you know, what do you hope to use this money for specifically, you heard of Valley Watch Supply, they've got Fargo with the table, they got Westbury, they've got us. So that meeting is going on this week. Hopefully, we'll have a bit of an update later this week, see how that goes. Also want to touch on, we've been talking throughout the session about the the pension related bills and the purse bills. There was the, there was two bills left, one that killed the pension, one that kept the pension alive. The bill that is House Bill ten forty, which is meant to kill the pension and go to a defined contribution plan, actually was voted out of committee with a do not pass recommendation last week. We had our meeting with North Dakota League of Cities last Friday, and there was some indication that may get put back in the committee, but I have not seen any motion on that yet. So we will continue to monitor that bill as well. Other than that, the council member Weber is our chair, and I could be open to any questions or do you have anything to Mr. Weber?
Both of these bills seem to be in in play to some odd degree. They both have large fiscal notes and with the final budget projections that came out a couple of weeks ago, the anticipation is that we may not know on these big cost bills.
Sure.
Very near the end of the session.
And and speaking of those, Mr. Bean, you you brought that up last week, and I was caught off guard a little bit is the the bunch of projections came in, they were lower than the governor's projections, but higher than what the legislature was working with. So that there's some that, that's why I paused a little bit when you asked that question. We were looking at it from two separate, two different perspectives, and that was that I caught that at the end of the meeting.
And the projections aside, between the the initial projections and the most recent ones, where legislature is short about one point two billion from what they've promised
Sure.
up to this point compared to the the projection.
To that point, they were to say yes to every bill that they currently have, going to be about a billion dollars.
So there's looking for Looking for needing cuts along the way.
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. Bean, thanks for your heading down there in person tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yes. Spend a little time on the highway, don't you? Okay, very good. That's that's all I have. Any anything else for Mr. Bernstein? Then we have item two point two, Grand Forks Public Library Board, Library Board Update, and here to speak to that is Library Board President, Mr. Sherwood, Mr. Brad Sherwood, and our city librarian Wendy Went is also here if there are any questions. And this is a general update, but also specific to item of bills twelve oh five and twenty three sixty.
That is correct.
Very good. Welcome, Mr. Sherwood.
Thank you. It's a privilege to appear before you, folks that are here and also in Zoom land. And as great, there are two bills, as you mentioned, you've got the House Bill twelve oh five and Senate Bill twenty three sixty, very similar bills, but with a couple of very, very distinct differences. First of all, twelve five has been House Bill twelve oh five, both bills before crossover were passed with overwhelming majorities. Thus, if and it looks as though they will continue, they pass after crossover, thus they'd probably not be subject to veto at the government level. The concern twelve oh five has been amended and they accepted those amendments, and while it's painful and difficult to comply, because it does impact every single piece of material in the building, twenty three sixty, the amendments have been submitted, but they have not been talked about at this time. And so there's there's no real knowledge whether or not twenty three sixty will be amended. There's been some talk in Bismarck that these also could these could merge together, the bills could come together as as one individual bill. Twenty three sixty is greatly concerning because twenty three six, twelve fifty talks a lot about what is obscene as far as visual and graphics is concerned. Twenty three sixty goes in and talks about things that are written. With the definitions they put down and with the committee, the conversations that have occurred, it would require libraries across the the state to go through every single book, every single page, to make a determination as to whether or not that material complies. And so that's a heads up that we wanted to provide to the city is that our wonderful library is with it, we're going to have to close if it passes as it's currently written, they're going to have to close in order to comply. And then they they seek compliance, I believe by January first of the of twenty twenty four, and whether or not that can even be done again by the letter of the bill as it currently stands is the is the greatest concern, because it impacts everything. And also just if so that we're aware to, that we've been given a heads up from law firm in Los Angeles that is willing to take, should this bill pass, they have offered pro bono to take the state of North Dakota to overturn these two particular bills. And so that's just a heads up, that's not a dumb deal, that's just the the law firm has again approached and talked to the librarians across the state of North Dakota and offered that particular service. And so what we're seeking, what we want to do is just let people know that the unintended consequences of what seems as though it would be a great idea, of course, nobody wants pornography or anything obscene in front of children, that's not, of course, not not the goal of anyone. And so but the unintended consequence is to make us to make us in Grand Forks and to make every single librarian go through every single piece of literature, remove them, those items of literature that that don't comply with the law and remove them from the premises. Can't, you have to destroy them, but still to be determined as to how we would get by with with doing that. I think that's about it, unless I'm missing something drastic. Oh, yeah, we already have, the other thing is libraries already have these policies in place. We've had a policy in place at the Grand Forks Public Library since nineteen seventy one, where somebody can come in and say, this, we have an issue with this particular resource, we'd like it under review, and it instantaneously goes into review. And at the last court meeting here last week, we asked the staff and the the head of our children's department said that he had not known of any for as long as he had been there, that no one had brought anything to our attention, and it's been thirteen years. And so we have policies in place to deal with things that this community feels are obscene or not appropriate, and so we see this as drastic overreach that's going to cause a lot more damage than what I think the public is really aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood. Thanks for your service on the library. As the board's president, Ms. Went, yes.
Well, I would just like to echo what Mr. Sherwood said about people have been linking, the proponents of these bills have been linking pornography and children. First of all, we do not put pornography in our library. And we definitely don't put pornography in the children's section. But there is something in the library, there's at least one thing in the in the library, in every library, that will offend someone. So some people are really stressing sexuality in both of these bills. You see, it says the word sexuality. No definition. So does that include a kiss? Does that include, you know, flirting or leading up to or is it the actual act? Because they say this, that's act in a different line item. So what exactly are they saying? And what they're saying is it can't be in our catalog at all. So that means we can't read our John Grisham if there's a sex scene in there. If it's one percent of the book is out, we can't read any of, you know, the Harlequin romances out. You know, I mean, it means thousands upon thousands of items in the library. Think about the movies. That's, you know, a lot of them have sex scenes, they're out, they're not in the children's section, but it says anywhere in our catalog. So it's the whole library. And they're saying anywhere that a child could be, if you've been to the library, you know families are welcome anywhere in the library, so the kids can be downstairs on the swings, whatever. They have access. So we had thought, you know, well, we'll just like chain off an area, but no, it's anywhere in our catalog. So they're very dangerous, overreaching bills that are trying to reduce what people can access, not just children, they're using those keywords, but it's for all of us. They're trying to eliminate LGBTQ stuff, they're trying to eliminate what they think is racy or wrong, but the fact is, if you look at the Bible, a librarian Brad found, just started a sort of cursory research, fifty eight pages out of twelve hundred pages. And that dealt with indecent exposure, rape, offering children for sex, prostitution, all all kinds of items that would make the Bible out of the library. And if it was found in the in our catalog, I'd be charged with a crime.
Yeah, that's, yes, any employee can be charged with a possible misdemeanor.
Yeah. And most important, there are two things that bother me the most about this. One, it's parents' rights. My son was an advanced reader. According to this, we might not be able to have Harry Potter. So then he was able to read it at a younger age. It was up to me to decide. It was up to me to decide if we wanted to have a conversation about different kinds of families, we could get a book about that. When he got to puberty and had some questions, it was helpful to get a book from the library to be able to talk about it and and just explain it a little better. You know, how else did you do that as a single mom with a son? There's no dad talk, so that stuff is so important. So that, it's my choice, what my child can read, it's not somebody else's choice, and it's not my choice to decide what your child can read. That's up to us to decide. The second thing is, these bills increase the have and have not divide. If you've got money, if you're comfortably well off, then this isn't a big deal. We'll just buy it from Amazon, we'll just order it online, if anybody want to read. The latest Tom Clancy, you know, there's a sexy in there, so no, that's out. The haves can order it, buy it, it's no problem. The have nots, who may need help explaining sex, explaining relationships, explaining the hard stuff. There's nowhere for them to go. The library is where they go to get the information they need to help their children. And basically, these bills are saying, no, you're you're on your own, you're lucky, you don't have money, and there's no place that will provide you the information. Those are my two biggest concerns. And then going to jail is a strong
But we, and and I heard that Canada Radio was discussing this last week, and so I called in and to 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 calm the masses down and invite everybody in Grand Forks to come to the Grand Forks Public Library, walk around, dig through the stacks, look, look all over that particular building, there's nothing that is here going to find that is obscene. There's no pornography in in that space at all. And so if if people are concerned, come to the library and take a look. I found out that I've only been serving in this capacity for a little over a year at this time, and I'm finding right now that Grand Forks has got the best library in the state of North Dakota by the reflection of the other librarians that have that have looked to Grand Forks to be a leader in the in in libraries for communities. And so we're very pleased with what we have right here. It's our library, it's this community's library. You know, if if we have issues with some of the materials in there, come to the library and fill out the form, talk to the librarians, if there's something that bothers you, this is not, this is not the way to do it.
So and we do have, that's the part that's unnecessary, we do have, we've got a collection development policy in place and forever for, and that defines how how we collect items and why. And a large part is based on community demand, community requests. And then I've also given you a copy of our request for reconsideration. People who have a complaint with anything we have, whether it's a program, a book, a movie, are given this form, and they can go home, fill it out, and bring it back, that our policy is written kind of right at the bottom there. I am required to review the material and the complaint within thirty days in a span. Then, should the person disagree with what I've said, they're welcome to appeal it to the library board, who then makes the decision. So there is a process. And I haven't had any of those forms filled out in the last five years. And there were a couple of years ago, but very sporadic, I think in my career at Grand Forks, maybe four, that gets submitted to fourteen years. But the one request I had, it was on a video. It was it was up to the children's department. It was assumed to be G rated, and there was a scene where you didn't see it graphically, but a pirate chopped the guy's head off, and he went rolling and bouncing across the ground, and your mom was horrified that her little three-year-old saw that. And I agree that it shouldn't be in the chief section, it should be in PG. Because then they know, okay, that's not for your little two-year-old, gee, it should be safe for everyone. So we did change where it was at. They were right, it should be somewhere else, but we've got that process. So I think the bills are just getting over the people.
Very good. The the bills have been sent out to all the council members. Well, we sent out the the legislative web link for three documents. And that includes testimony. Do you have some sense of what has the those in favor, those opposed, where where are we at in terms of that statewide?
From the testimony that I've seen online, it's overwhelmingly opposed. There are some folks that are that are in favor, but right now it is, it's coming in from everybody that's testified to be against, against, against. Again, for the overreach, not because that's not a good conversation to talk about about what's right and what's good for children, it's the absolute overreach, every librarian is saying the same thing. We already do, we already do this. There's another layer of bureaucracy, we have to now submit to the state these lists on a yearly, you know, and explain what you're doing to comply, when there's been compliance all along, so. It's going to be expensive.
Very good.
And unfortunate.
Yes, the the expense, so there's there's two issues that I I hope will consider. One is, is there a problem that needs to be solved here? And you've indicated there's already a policy in place.
Yes.
But if if there is a problem, how do we know if there's a problem? And and the way to know that would be to go to extreme expense.
Yes.
And and have, in fact, you've mentioned the library would have to close until January of twenty twenty four.
In order to get the work done, it's 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 unknown, I I asked Wendy, I said, how long will it take the staff at the library to go through every book, every page, to look for, to find the sex scenes in it?
We have over two hundred and fifty thousand items. And to go through, it may be just saying of Tom Clancy, three hundred and fifty pages, and there might be two pages or five pages of a sex scene. So when we purchase materials, it's based on demand, on, you know, the reviews, it's based on, it's not based on, is there some sex in this book? And you can't find a rating for that. There is no governing board that just says, whoa, three sex scenes in this, you know, it doesn't say that. So the only way for us to find out is to read the books, or at least skim, look through every page, or and watch the movies. How do we know that there's a sex scene in there? I mean, some, we look at the cover and you'll know, but for a lot of them, it's surprising. I mean, a lot of friends of mine have talked about it, and friends talked about it.
Yep.
You read a great book that you enjoyed very much.
Yeah.
Few pages.
Jack Reacher, I read the Lee Todd Jack Reacher series, and those will all be good. Because they've got a small percentage in there that is unfortunate. It is, if you look at the videos that are online, and you'll you'll see that they do discuss, they mention two books over and over again, they're they're hesitant to supply any list, though the librarians on the list serve that I'm on, believe that there is a list of about thirty books that they will want to ban after the law comes into place. But there's two books that they mention over and over again, and so that's what they're judging, they say, okay, if these two books are 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 going to be pulled, then books that are similar in spoke with the amount of of naughty and there are also going to get pulled. And one of them is a graphic novel for young adults, that's that's about puberty, sexuality, becoming human, it's what, let's talk about it. And that apparently is the one that descended, some of it created the creation of 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 these particular bills. And the other one is, I forget, that it's a John Green book about Alaska, that has for, apparently for sex scenes in in that particular two hundred and fifty page novel.
But we already have a process.
Yes.
Library.
Number one solution is for parents to be with their children, which ninety nine out of a hundred parents in our library are with their kids. And allow them to check it out or don't allow them, and that's each parent's right to decide what their kid is ready for and what they aren't, rather than legislative body to say, no, no one is is allowed to read that.
And is there a a fiscal note attached to these bills with state funding to support this?
No, not at this time.
Is there any estimate of the the cost involved?
Not at this time, not that I'm aware. I asked today on email if there were specifically, and I've heard nothing.
The state librarian is working on a kind of a formula, but when you think about the number of items, say, two hundred and fifty thousand, and the number of pages in the average book, and then the average salary of library staff members, you are talking about a lot of money. And according to the way these are written, we would have to close our doors after a certain date, because because we'd be breaking law to have the doors open.
Any questions from other council members? Anyone online?
President Sanders.
Sure. Hi, Mr. Weber. So, Mr. Sherwood, thank you, and Ms. Went, thank you for being here tonight, and and Mr. Sherwood, thank you for your service on the library board, it's very much appreciated. Did I hear you say that both of these bills have been coming out of committees overwhelmingly with a due pass? Is that is that correct?
Correct.
So I I understand what you're saying, and I get the the whole, we're concerned about censorship and and this and that. What I'm actually concerned about is what are we going to do when these pass?
Yes.
How are we going to do, how are we going to deal with it when they pass? So I'm assuming, and I'm and I recognize that you're you're talking worst case scenario, and I very much appreciate that. On the on on the library listeners that you're members of, is there any way that we can start planning ahead to start coordinating with other libraries so that we don't have to actually sit down and review every single book? Can't we be sharing information on the books that we find that perhaps have issues and the books that we've looked through that, I mean, maybe I don't, I think perhaps the legislature is up in arms about this, because I don't know, perhaps they they feel like our libraries aren't actually taking the initiative to look and and self-police. I I don't know, I don't pretend to know what's on their mind, but maybe we can be the leaders in this moving forward and 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 start talking to other libraries about how we can work together. Because I I I'm not sure there's anything we can do about it. So I I'm just worried that we're going to be, we're, we should be setting ourselves up so that we can see, can succeed as soon as possible.
Correct. Agreed.
Well, I think Brad also mentioned that there's the, that First Amendment expert attorney who is very concerned about this, and so that if they pass, and when they pass, there will be a lawsuit, and that may slow things down as well. Because they are totally committed to to this, and it is a clear violation of First Amendment rights. So there's going to be that too.
And I liked the idea you heard at the last council meeting about trying to send us back to a study session, whether or not that is feasible or not, but that has been suggested, and and I don't know exactly how to make that occur out in Bismarck. I've emailed my representatives and requested that something occur. Because I think if it got studied and looked at, and if they realized that how redundant this is and how expensive this is going to be, I can't believe that there's not a smarter way to solve this problem. You know, it's it, you should, it should be done surgically, you don't cut your bangs with a hatchet, it doesn't make any sense. So this is more of a heads up, I think, for the council, for the community that this is occurring. We know that there's there's, you know, nobody can wave a magic wand and, you know, and change folders in Bismarck, so.
And and I understand too, they hear pornography and kids.
Yeah.
And who's going to vote against that? I mean, we all say, no, no pornography with kids, of course not. But it's so much more than that.
And of course, the Mr. Bean? Zoski? No. This is a committee of the whole. We could decide to take action this evening. We could make a recommendation for action next week. Do we want to take any action at this?
All right. We're good. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
What action can we take? So as members of the council, we could fast track this and make a recommendation tonight to put this on our legislative updates, because this could come under our Home Rule Authority, which is already one of our legislative priorities. We could make a recommendation for that to be considered at next week's council meeting. Such an action, or just for further discussion at next week's council. The the process for our legislative advocacy is that it will be, prior to the session, the city council approves a list of priorities. The bulk of those have to do with infrastructure or workforce development. But we do have a Home Rule Authority priority, where we say, this is a local matter, this falls under the purview of Grand Forks Home Rule Authority, and that we feel that this is legislative overreach. It was under that heading that I brought this to council for consideration last week, and the request at that time was for us to consider asking that the legislature move forward with a study of this, specific to, is there a problem? How do we know there's a problem? And what is the the cost? What is the fiscal note? Is the state going to provide funding for this work, or is every small town library supposed to bear this this expense on their own?
So tonight we would make a motion?
We're always able to make a motion at any time, so yes.
Mr. Weber?
President Sanders, please.
Do we know where our local legislators stand on this issue? The reason I'm asking, I'm a little bit concerned, it sounds like the ship has sailed on this, and and I understand, and last week was happy to go along with the whole concept of the study. I'm a little bit concerned, we're going to alienate our community, and I'm not sure that we want to alienate either our community or our library at this point, when it feels like it's already going to pass. Perhaps we can, because we can always take action next week as well. Perhaps between now and then, we should find out where our local legislators sit on the issue, and just for everyone's edification, I I did hear from several people this last week that were unhappy with us putting, sticking our necks out on on this issue. And so I was provided several titles, which I haven't shared with Ms. Went yet, I'm going to. I have no idea if they're in our library or not. Of course, people are going to, when they don't want us to take action, they're going to give us, you know, the far-reaching fringes of why we we should should or shouldn't do something. Either way, I'm just, I'm just, I think we should step softly right now, and I'd like to learn a little bit more about where our local legislators are.
When we met with the legislators who were in town at the chamber meeting, this would have been a few Saturdays ago. I had some conversations with different legislators. Um I had some conversations with different uh legislators. Um one, I remember indicating, uh he simply pointed at his phone. I- indicating that if if kids wanted access to pornography. Um there's there's a different avenues for them to to take rather than going to the library. Uh Representative Sanford um uh indicated that there was going to be tremendous expense. Uh involving uh by some estimates, years to go through all of the materials. Said it would take a couple of years just to go through all the children's materials in the state. Um I don't know, Mr. President Sandy, if if that had uh figured on a collaborative effort of all the libraries across the state. Representative Sanford uh seemed concerned about the uh as Mr. Sherwood has put it, the unintended consequences. Uh in terms of uh staff time and the the cost to the state. Not to mention uh the potential cost of a lawsuit.
You absolutely cannot argue their points there, I believe what they're saying is true and. Um can't argue with with what either Mr. Short or Ms. Went are saying. I'm just saying that it sounds like it's already going to pass. And so I think it's just my personal opinion, we should be spending our time worrying about how are we gonna deal with it when it does. Just my opinion.
Mr. Vien, yes. Mr. Vien?
Well, I'm just wondering, has the has the library board itself taken action on this? I know we have obviously the leadership here. But has there been a formal action from library?
I believe that the testimony from Ms. Lent has been shared with all the council members.
But it has been a vote by the board that.
Ah was that uh Mr. Sherwood, was that supported by the?
Yesterday, we we just uh last Wednesday, uh we took a vote uh and to allow the um. A- any individuals that work for the Grand Forest Public Library, if they chose as an individual to sign on to the potential class action lawsuit or to not sign on. They they may do that at their own volition, we've encouraged folks to provide testimony to the state and to contact their representative representatives. But as a board, uh I think we're in full support of being obviously against toll five and twenty-three sixty.
And and President Cindy, um we all receive emails um and and a few emails one way or the other. Uh certainly, we want to uh consider those and respond to constituents. Um however, uh one of the processes uh in the city is to have. Uh committees or or different groups like the library board. And uh we ask people to serve for free and we generally look to their uh their knowledge on on these matters.
And we generally agree with their opinions.
Right.
That is a hundred percent correct.
Thanks. Um we do not have a citizen comments uh during committee of the whole. But if this matter comes back uh next week, uh then we do have a a process for citizen comments at that time. Is there a motion? Hearing no motion, uh we'll move on to uh the next item. Um item three, three point one, request from North Dakota Museum of Art for approval of a class three. On off sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage license.
Uh that's for the Weber members of the city council, um finance departments received an application for a class three beer and wine license from. The North Dakota Museum of Art. Uh the museum of art currently has a cafe within their facility as well as hosting various um. Events and having their own alcohol license. Um would be a great addition to that in their opinion, so we bring this forward. Um city departments are reviewing that and thus I've heard no objections from city departments.
Um it's my understanding that uh there is not uh. To be alcohol served on campus, but the the art museum, is it actually a part of campus? It looks to me when I go to campus like it is, but is it actually part of?
So it is part of campus, however, some of those rules and opinions um have changed over the years. Um much as a couple of years ago, archives coffee house also obtained a class three uh beer and wine license for their facility. Which is also kind of in the heart of campus. Um included in your packet, there is an agreement that U N D did sign with the Museum of Art back in twenty twenty-one. When they first started considering this. Um and that shows that a U N D at Livingston Section two H. That um U N D is in support or or okay with them having alcohol. Presently, when they do have functions there at the museum or their concerts in the garden, which are outside adjacent to the facility. They do um currently use utilize an outside vendor. Um which is an additional cost and then, of course, that vendor takes the revenues from those sales back with them, so. Um this would just be allowing them to offer that amenity within their dining room as well as when they have their own events, they wouldn't have to use that third party vendor. Um their staff would still have to be fully trained, they'd all have to have server training and go through the normal channels just like any other. Um alcoholics and holder.
Fantastic, thanks. Uh any questions or comments?
Would they still, what you said for their events, would they also be able to offer that then to outside rentals? They could, um with the class three license, they could come in and apply for a class eleven license. So if there was something going on at another space in town. That didn't have an alcohol license, they would be able to apply for that class eleven license and be able to cater that event as well. Um and that would be, you know, not only throughout campus, but also, you know, in the community.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for Ms. Linsky, a second for Ms. Towski, any further questions or comments? Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, motion passes, thank you very much. Item three point two, request for noise variance and approval of letter of intent. For co-mingling during the twenty twenty-three Beta Palooza Town Square uh on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty-three, good evening.
Good evening, um member Weber and the committee members and President Sandy. Um we are kicking off into a spring now. Events with a with a fury, we've had lots and lots of them come in. This first one that I'm bringing here too is um a second year event. They did have a first year event, even though they did get, I believe, snowed out last year, um or rained out or something, but. Um Rambus Brothers will be uh, Rambus guys are gonna be doing the alcohol again. And I know that if they do have a implement whether they do go to their facility. But um it's a benefit event, they have local bands and they're asking for co-mingling within Town Square. Um they also have the police department um will be hired as they do with all co-mingling.
How many police that have to be there for this?
You know, um it did right now, they have down here a a an attendance of five hundred. And I don't know what Sergeant Brown has already met with them, but I do know that it would be appropriate to that labor.
Approval. Second, for Mrs. Towski, a second for Mr. Weigle, uh any further questions or comments? Hearing, yes, Mr. Vien, please.
Quick question, how does this align with Spring Fest?
This is a um a philanthropy philanthropy group, this is a veterans group, um if you notice on there some of their letters. They've been doing this um on campus for a while. And um they they give all of the money and most of the money except for the food vendors who shake their own money. Um the donations go to them and this is like their fundraiser. The event goes from six P M and it's uh closed and it must be shut down by eleven. Versus a twelve or even a one or two o'clock in the morning. And um also, I I. I think that using the local bands versus uh anyone else, it those are the differences that I see.
I just remember when we did that and then tried to get that stopped, we had. Concerts, other concerts, so this may align with that, but I think there was one even at the Lera Center and they tried to give away from. From alcohol related yeah events at that time that seemed mushroom, they just didn't want to see the continuation of going back to that.
They do have Spring Fest at the Lares again this year.
Pardon?
Spring Fest is, well, it's not called Spring Fest, but it's a a concert that same weekend at the Lares.
Same.
Right, not this weekend, but what reading and review day would be?
Not University Park, but in in yours, okay.
And this is the end of J.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, motion passes, thank you. Uh item three point three, plans and specs for project number eight six four zero, district number seven seven three. Reconstruct South Twentieth Street from Seventeenth to Twentieth Avenue South, Mr. Leeb.
Good evening, Chairman Weber, members of the committee. The uh engineering department has a number of items to present tonight, so I'll try to be expeditious, but. Uh this first one uh has a little bit of discussion behind it. Um this this is reconstruction of South Twentieth Streets from Seventeenth Avenue South to Twentieth Avenue. Uh it's immediately east of Red River High School. Um on February twenty first, the council created the special assessment district for this project and approved the engineer's report. Uh as our staff engineers were working on the design, we identified that the MPO's. Um draft twenty fifty bike pedestrian plan calls for this section to have a bike path. Uh it currently does not have a bike path and has sidewalks on both the east and west side of the road. So in addition to recommending the original scope of this project, uh our departments recommending we install a bike path. On the western side of the road, which would be beside that Red River High School's on. Uh in doing so, we are recommending this be at city costs using bike path development funds that we have budgeted this year. Uh the reason I say that is sidewalks are usually replaced. Uh for safety reasons and that costs a special assess to the adjacent property owner. In this case, the sidewalks are, they're older, they're deteriorated, but in my professional judgment, they're not uh a safety hazard. So it's really our project that's driving the replacement of sidewalk with a bike path.
So we're talking about a multi-use uh lane of a path?
Correct, it it would not be uh say, you know, ten or fourteen foot wide, it would be an eight foot wide shared use path, but. You know, on the narrower side of what we install for shared use path.
Very good, looking for questions, comments or or motion?
Approval, second.
President Sandy is second for Mr. Weigle, any further questions or comments? Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign. Motion passes, item three point four, uh bid award for eight six one seven dash one eight dash seven eight. Twenty twenty-three concrete street uh repair of arterial streets, concrete rehab subdivision, concrete rehab. Yes.
Uh thank you, this uh is our annual contract to repair concrete streets, so when they blow up in summer or just deteriorated. Uh this is currently out for bid and we are scheduled to have a bid opening on Thursday this week. So we are requesting to bring those bid results directly to council next Monday uh with with recognition.
And are are you needing a motion on this at this time or oh do we just wait for those bids to move forward next week?
I I'm uncertain as to the committee's procedures, but uh I that that was.
Chairman Weber, move it forward, please.
Yeah, we'll move approval or second or whatever.
Uh a motion from Mr. President Sandy, a second from Mrs. Sowski, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, thank you, item three point five. Uh bid award for project number eight five seven three, district number seven seven one, reconstruct Legend Lane, twenty eighth Avenue South to Legend Lane.
Uh thank you, um previously, the council approved plans and specifications on March sixth. Uh we subsequently advertised this for bid and we had a bid opening last week, Thursday. Uh we received three bids uh for reconstruction of Legend Lane. The low bid was submitted by Op Construction in the amount of five hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. Uh this is about two percent under the engineer's estimates, so we're pleased with that and we recommend award to the low bidder.
For a motion? Question? The uh Mr. Lieberman, the actual contract that we award for for a construction project like this. Do we have any sort of a requirement um related to a drug testing policy for the winning bidder?
You know, uh President Sandy, it's a good question, I know that's been brought up in the past and I I don't know the definitive answer on that. I I know companies have their own drug testing policies. And we do have overall safety responsibilities for um uh city project sites.
I know uh I I brought this up in the past. Um I don't know what uh Op Construction, if they have a drug testing policy or not. Um I don't know if any of the uh awardees tonight. I do know that um as part of three point nine, the master engineering services agreement that we're talking about approving or potentially approving tonight. Doesn't have a requirement for a drug testing policy. Um I think we uh. We owe it to our city employees that have to meet a drug testing policy to be awarding contracts to. Other organizations that also have to meet the same standard, uh just my my opinion. Um I think we should uh start by talking to, as we're awarding bids. Ask people and start finding out what their drug, what their actual drug testing policies are. And uh then have a discussion at the committee or the council. Um as to what sort of implementation that we that we might be interested in placing on others. Because I I for one think it's, it would be unfair for our our police department or our fire department or people in our engineering department to have to. Uh meet a certain standard, yet people doing lots of work for our community don't actually have to meet the same standard. So that's just my opinion, um I will move approval on this side.
We have a motion from President Sandy. Second from Ms. Linsky, uh Mr. Vien, please.
No, I I was thinking a little bit different, Mr. Sandy, if if agree with what you're saying is if we should create a policy. Have the policy in writing and then verify it when they do their bids.
Yeah, I'm good either way.
And certainly, we wouldn't wanna be uh imposing new uh requirements after having received bids.
Right, not at this point, but even maybe for the fall or next spring or whenever, I I again, I I I haven't put enough thought into it.
Thank you for uh for that, President Sandy, I've taken note and and we'll take that back just a half and and see what uh. See what we can come up with that in this intention.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman.
We have a motion on the floor, uh any further questions or comments? Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, motion passes. Three point six, bid award for project number eight six one six, twenty twenty-three asphalt street repairs.
Thank you, this is our annual asphalt uh street repair contract. Uh we opened bids last Thursday, received three bids. The low bid of fifty three thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars was submitted by Op Construction. Uh this is about thirty seven hundred dollars over the engineer's estimate, it's very, very close. Um we are recommending award to the low bidder at this at this time.
Motion from President Sandy.
Second.
Okay, um should be you two. Uh questions or comments, hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion passes, item three point seven, bid award for project number eight five four one four two four three four five. District number five eight six, three five five, five eight seven, seven six six. Sanitation, sanitary water, stormwater paving for Grand Valley uh first edition.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion on three point seven.
Second.
And a second for Mr. Weigle, uh we have a motion on the floor, any questions or comments to item three point seven? Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Item three point seven passes unanimously, item three point eight, bid award for project number eight six three nine, district number seven seven two. Reconstruct Second Avenue North from Washington to North Eighteen.
Uh thank you, uh this is the reconstruction of Second Avenue North, um this uh. Um the city uh received bids on uh will be receiving bids on March thirtieth, excuse me. And we're requesting to take those bids directly to uh City Council on uh on Monday.
Move approval.
Motion from President Sandy, second for Mrs. Sowski, any questions or comments? Hearing none on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, item number three point eight, uh passes unanimously. Item three point nine, master engineering services agreements with nine consulting firms for various future city projects. For twenty twenty-three through uh twenty twenty-eight, city project number eight five two two.
Thank you, um Chairman Weber, I thought it might be useful to give just a little explanation for the public. Maybe listening uh so they understand how we use master service agreements for engineering services. The the engineering department uh frequently uses the services of outside consulting firms. Uh for either design or construction management services. Uh this augments our staff, uh sometimes due to the volume of projects that we have to work. Uh or simply to bring in unique skill sets that uh it's more cost effective to use outside consultants. And to have a staff member with that particular expertise. Uh historically, we operate under these master agreements, which does not guarantee. Uh, historically, we operate under these master agreements, which does not guarantee work to any of these uh engineering firms. There is no, there are no costs discussed in these master agreements. It's uh strictly sets the groundwork for uh issues like payment processing, documents, insurance requirements. Some of the more administrative contractual items that uh can, can occupy about a fifty page master agreement for each uh for each firm. Uh, we then issue task orders for specific projects under these agreements and that's where we historically bring to city council for approval. That'll discuss the number of hours, their billing rate and the overall cost, scope of work for a specific project.
So with. Is that where we might put in a, a drug policy, for instance?
Uh, I, I'm not sure. I think it might fit better in the master agreement portion. But uh, that's something we're gonna have to look at.
Very good.
It's just.
Thanks.
Uh, tonight, what we're doing is uh we're recommending uh nine master service agreements be re-approved. Uh, these are actually, this is actually new language that we have standardized uh through the city's attorney's office and we've utilized uh E J C B C language. Uh, E J C B C is the uh engineer joint contract document committee. It's really a professional standard for this exact type of agreements. Uh, so we are uh standardizing the language. So each consulting firm is treated equally, for example, insurance requirements that the city requires them to carry uh for those type of issues. We're also standardizing the length of the agreement. Uh, historically, it had been three years. We're recommending five years. There's really no reason uh to have it renewed so frequently, because the language really doesn't change over time. It's very, very similar. And we are also trying to get all nine of these consulting firms on the same schedule, so that we only have to come to city councils once versus every time a a uh agreement renews that we bring it forward for another agreement renewal. So uh with that, we are recommending approval of master uh engineer service agreements with the nine consulting firms that are listed on the staff report tonight.
Thank you. So we're looking for questions, comments or a motion on item three point nine.
Move approval.
Motion for President Sandy.
Second.
Oh, almost. Okay. Second for Mr. London. Uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item three point nine passes unanimously. Item three point one zero, bid award for project number eight, five, four, nine, upgrade pump station number one eighty four. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, this project is to rehab one of our existing pump stations, uh, pump station one eighty four. It's near Fifty Fifth Street and Sixth Avenue. Bits were open last Thursday on March, May third. Uh, we received two bids for the Schedule B general with low bid being from Tony Anderson Construction, the amount of four hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. And three bids were submitted for like electrical with low bid from John's Refrigeration and Electric, electric in the amount of five hundred and eighteen, eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. Like mine bids are six percent over the engineer's estimate and staff is recommending a word to the two low bidders.
Thank you, Miss Seaborn. Um, questions or comments?
Whoever.
I have a motion from Mrs. Solsky.
I'll, I'll second that. I have a quick question or comment.
Please, go ahead.
Um, again, similar to the previous award to Op Construction. I think it would be great to contact Tony, both Tony Anderson and John's Refrigeration and ask them what their drug testing policies are. Thank you.
Is that a, a contingent aspect of the motion or?
No, purely, purely fact funded.
Okay. Um, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion three point one zero passes. Uh, item three point one one, bid award for project number eight, five, two, nine, upgrade controls and drives and flood uh public uh pump station. Pump stations number two, zero, two, two, zero, three, and two, one, zero, Miss Seaborn.
So this project is also similar to the last one and just upgrading the controls and drives in the, these flood stations. Um, this project also will take the controls outs that are outside of lift station twenty four and move them to two, ten. Um, so there's a little bit extra engineering that was involved with that. And then we also had them do a safety evaluation and realized that we're lacking on some of them. So this will get them up to OSHA approves um safety effort with this project. Similarly to the last project, this has been on March twenty third. Um, no bids were received for the general work. Four bids were received for electrical with low bid from R V V Electric and the module's six hundred and seventy seven dollars and seven, seven hundred and five, which is sixteen percent under the engineer's estimate. We're recommending low bid to R V V Electric and then directing us engineering with our consultant W F W to revisit that, that general P work.
So needing to revisit the general, but move forward with the, for us to move forward.
Correct.
Can you move this question?
Please, of course.
Can you move forward with electrical and not the other?
Yeah, so the, the two projects are pretty different. I mean, because we're gonna get started on ordering the electrical parts, so we can have that done in a timely manner. And then for that general contractor, but they can, they can happen separately.
So even if one doesn't happen, the other one can still.
Yeah, we're hopeful that we'll find a contractor though.
Mr. Bean, I will, will have a motion from Mr. Bean, second from Mrs. Solsky. Further questions?
Yeah, same, same comment about R B B.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item three point one one passes unanimously. Item three point one two, engineering amendment number one for project number eight, five, two, nine. Upgrade controls and drives in uh flood pump stations, two, oh, two, two, oh, three, and two, ten, Seaborn.
So as I mentioned on that previous project, we're moving those controls from the station twenty four into two, ten, and then we had the safety evaluation. So that just took extra engineering effort that we weren't planning in our original project scope. Therefore, needing the amendment with W F W and then we'll also use that amendment to revisit the work and make sure that the general work will go out as needed. So staff is recommending to approve amendment one with W F W in the moment, listed in the staff report.
Questions or comments?
Ooh.
Motion for Mr. Bean, second for Mrs. Solsky. Anything further? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item three point one two passes unanimously. Item three point one three, updated Greenway lease agreement between the city of Grand Forks and the Grand Forks Park District, Miss Greenall. Oh, Miss Parvi.
No, good evening. Um, this evening, we have the updated lease agreement before you. Um, Kim Greenall has worked extensively on this with both the legal departments at the city of Grand Forks and the Grand Forks Park District. The intent here was really to bring the, the documents together to make it a little bit more seamless. And then um the current document has expired, so therefore we do need to um approve a new agreement. Um, but very minor changes were made throughout, just really to simplify, simplify the document to agencies. This will go back to the Grand Forks Park Board once it's approved, if approved by the city council.
Any questions, comments on item three point one three? Hearing none, looking for a motion? Motion for Mr. Bean, second from Mrs. Solsky. Um, uh, anything further? Hearing, we're significant.
I'm sorry, on this Parvi, do, do we have a red, a red line version? Is it, would it be possible to get a red line version prior to the council meeting?
Yes.
Basically, thank, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for that request. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item three point one three passes unanimously. Item three point one four, wastewater treatment plant surplus property.
Um, thank you, um, council member Weber. This evening, we just have a list of items that um staff has identified at the wastewater treatment plants that are surplus and no longer needed. Uh, we'll go through the process to clear those surplus and then we'll um list those on Gov Deals disposal if we can't sell them properly. We did add two items today so that that list was updated. I've been working with the park district on a couple items from Riverside Pool that are no longer needed that will surplus as well at this time.
Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Have a motion from Mrs. Solsky, second from President Sandy, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item three point one four, passage of amendments.
Thank you.
Um, uh, city council member discussion members, uh, start with Mr. Weigle.
No, thank you, Mr. Weber.
Uh, Mrs. Solsky.
No, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Linsky.
No, thank you.
Mr. Bean.
Just a couple of quick comments. After last council meeting, we talked a little bit about the after action reveal. I'm just a short update on what I just didn't able to assess. Um, and get an understanding. I've done a little bit of research online. I've had people submit information and it's all really, really well aligned. Um, there's really four areas that you want to look at. What was expected to happen, what actually happened, what went well and why and, and how could there be an improvement and what that would be and how you might do that. Um, which I think would be just beneficial for us all after um and as we've gone through and, and it looked at the issues with uh hoof on and processes. Um. One of the things that is important is that the results need to be objective and credible. Um, and whatever way we go about it, we should try to address it as such and the process needs to be transparent. So I think in some ways I have more questions than answers. Uh, I did have a discussion with the mayor today to talk about these things um as he had made the suggestion last week. Um, and it's gonna be really important that we have the right leadership structure um so that there's no questions, as I described earlier. Uh, possibly a steering committee. Uh, we really need to establish a scope. Uh, what our objective outcome looks like, a timeline and possibly a budget. And make sure that those uh, we might contract with an independent consultant or reviewer that would be qualified to, to look at this and not just have an interest in it. So I think there's a ways to go with this. It's gonna take a little bit of time, although I'd like to see it not extend too, too long. And to get input from those who might have input assumed upfront. There's, but no recommendation, no suggestion at this time. Um, uh, and look for thoughts from council and other members of what that might look like.
Is, is there a consultant that you have in mind at this point? Um, and after the flood, was there an after action review? Was there a similar process at that time?
No, I don't recall everything. Really no.
Has, have, has the city gone through previous after action reviews?
Again, not that I don't worry.
Okay.
No, this, to me, this would be something, something turning.
Anything else?
I won't say we haven't. I won't say that city departments like police and fire may not have, may have done that. In fact, as I understand, some do that real regularly after an incident.
Sure.
Um, but I don't know if we've done it at this level.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Uh, President Sandy.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Have a great, have a great week, everyone.
Very good. Looking for a motion to adjourn? For Mrs. Solsky, second from Mrs. Linsky, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.